The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
It is now seven o'clock. We will call the regular town council meeting of November 9 to order. Gary, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin the evening with presentations and recognitions. Chris, could you read the Veterans Day proclamation?
I'm up here to go down there.
Oh, it's good on there.
Okay.
I'm gonna make you work for it.
Yep. Whereas the citizens of our country are justly proud of the men and women who have fought to defend the principles of liberty and freedom on which our nation was founded. And whereas, from the revolutionary era militias through today's sophisticated defense structure, American service members have defended our country in times of challenge, brought honor to the United States, and created a solid foundation for its continued security, growth, and prosperity. And whereas, despite the tremendous perils and pressures of wartime, our armed forces have defended the country with conviction and courage. In admiration of the strength of our convictions, other nations have looked to America for leadership, and our allies have always been secure in the knowledge that our proud country will not allow its principles and beliefs to be compromised. And whereas, the citizens of the United States will forever owe an immense debt of gratitude to our veterans for the sacrifices they have made to secure the safety of our country. And whereas, as an expression of that gratitude, President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed into law an act calling for the observance of Veterans Day on November 11th of each year. And in 1921, that date was originally designated as Armistice Day in remembrance of the end of World War I and as a perpetual reminder of the blessings of peace. And by 1954, the observance widened to honor the courageous veterans of all foreign conflicts. And whereas, our veterans reflect the preeminent qualities of patriotism and courage in all of us and continue to make countless contributions to military and civilian life. In addition, many men and women from Connecticut National Guard are serving in Iraq and Afghanistan or are scheduled to be deployed there shortly, along with many other Connecticut residents serving in the United States Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, and Coast Guard. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby thanks the many contributions and accomplishments of all our veterans. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of November 2021, C.J. Thomas, Chair of Farmington Town Council.
Thank you, Chris. Our next proclamation is for 2021 Firefighter of the Year, Mr. Mastertista.
Welcome.
Good to see everyone here. Russ?
Nice to see you.
This doesn't surprise me, this proclamation.
Not one bit at all. I'm gonna read the proclamation first. That will chat a little. Here's a proclamation. Whereas Russ Nelson has served the town of Farmington as a firefighter for 34 years at the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, beginning his service on July 21st, 1987. And whereas Russ Nelson has held numerous social line officer positions for the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, to include president, vice president, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, assistant chief, and then becoming chief in 2004, holding that position for 16 years. Quite an accomplishment. Whereas Russ Nelson has continued to enhance the fire service within the state of Connecticut through his position as a regional county coordinator for the task force team leader for Task Force 54 under the statewide fire service disaster response team. That's a mouthful. And vice president of the Capital Region's Fire Chiefs Association. And whereas Russ Nelson has made an immeasurable contribution to the town of Farmington and its residents, such as fundraising for regional burn building, or our burn building, to enhance firefighter training and serving on numerous apparatus committees to ensure the department has the safest and the most efficient equipment and continuing a high level of response to calls for service. And whereas Russ Nelson has always maintained a focus on the public good and acted to protect the public interest while donating countless hours of time, energy, and personal commitment to better our community and enrich the lives of the residents of the town of Farmington. Now, therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commends Russ Nelson for his excellent work on behalf of the community, and we congratulate him on his 2021 Firefighter of the Year award. The Farmington Town Council hereby proclaims November 9, 2021, is Russ Nelson Day in Farmington, Connecticut. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of November 2021, signed by C.J. Thomas, Chair of the Farmington Town Council. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
So, I've been in the department a long time, and I've watched this man perform some great things for this town. He has always had the town of Farmington in his best interest and for his department and the people in his department and all the departments in this town. Immeasurable amount of hours that Russ has put in. The town of Farmington thanks you. Thank you very much, Russ. It's huge what you do. I thought I heard you this morning on the air, quite frankly, but I don't know. But I just want the community to know that this 34 years that Russ has put in has been thousands of hours, thousands of hours, getting up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning to medical calls, box alarms, all for the best interest of our community and the safety of our residents. So, Russ, I really mean it. Thank you. On behalf of Farmington, again, thank you very much. A few tokens, your proclamation, a spiffy hat, and be safe. Thank you, everyone. Good guy here.
Thank you.
With your indulgence, Mr. Chair, I will be brief. I'll just add a little bit to what Peter had to say with regards to Russ. When I was a member of the town council, I always knew that I could count on Russ to give me all the information that I needed and sometimes more than, more information than I wanted about what was going on with the fire service in Farmington. So he was always very generous with his time and explained everything, you know, that I needed to know as a council member and to other council members. So I really appreciated that, you know, your patience and your willingness to share. Anyhow, so I bring another gift from the state of Connecticut. General Assembly official citation introduced by Representative Mike D'Amico, Representative Tammy Exum, Senator Derek Slapp, Senator Rick Lopes. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Russ Nelson in recognition of your selection as Farmington's Firefighter of the Year for 2021. Over a 34-year career with the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, you have served the people of Farmington and the state of Connecticut with honor and dedication, holding numerous leadership positions in local, regional, and statewide fire service organizations. Your commitment to training, safety, efficiency, and rapid response is legendary and commendable. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given on this ninth day of November 2021 at the state Capitol by Martin Looney, President Pro Tem of the State Senate, Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House of Representatives, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of the State. Congratulations, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you, Russ.
Mike, if you could offer me a moment of indulgence. I appreciate your coming out tonight, and I have throughout the year when you're offering these proclamations. But throughout the last couple of months, there have been a number of discussions about the Main Street sidewalks, so I just wanted to ask a quick question of you. I assume I'd be correct in saying you did everything you could do to help us with that project, because I know you always do the best you can for the town. I know that our staff did everything they could possibly do to get this running on time and get it done, and there were a number of delays. They responded immediately to everything that came in. So what I'm gonna ask of you is if you could please go to the state and find out where these delays were so we can pinpoint what the problem was, whether it's COVID, whether it was delays in communication. So I would love you to come back to our next meeting and just tell us what that was.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you, Michael.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to item D, public hearing. Paul.
Thank you.
Legal notice, Town of Farmington. The public hearing will be held on November 9, 2021, at 7:05 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 78, Animals, to add Article II Wildlife Feeding. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 26th day of October 2021, Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Thank you. Kat?
So for a presentation for the public hearing, we have Brenda, our Animal Control Officer and Chief Malanson to run through a few things.
Thank you for having me here again. I'll just briefly go over what we've discussed about the wildlife feeding ordinance. You can go to the next slide. So the purpose is to stop attracting wildlife close to our homes, because I get many complaints of residents that are really concerned for their children and pets in the neighborhood. And I have many that complain when they have to pick up lots of trash that's dragged through the neighborhood by a bear. And I also have lots of residents that love and invite the wildlife onto their property. Next slide. We've all seen it in the news and on social media. Record numbers of bears are entering homes, says the DEP. Bear and coyote sightings are on the rise. Next slide. So for the bear complex, what's happening? The bears desire to gain as many calories with using as little energy as possible. The black bear mothers, the sows, are raising their cubs, eating lots of our trash and our bird seed, and this is much easier than foraging for their natural foods. As a result, these cubs are growing up and they're losing a lot of their natural fear of humans. The DEP had given me this chart, which shows the reports that are made to the DEP for Farmington residents or from Farmington residents. The green line shows the 2020 reports, and you can see in the trash complaints, there's a major spike. The brown line there is for 2019, and you can see it's, they're just getting a lot more. Same with the bird seed. The green line for 2020 is going way up. And the other category is things like children's swimming pools, hammocks, things like that. All these are on the rise. So bear conflicts will continue and increase if we don't make some changes. With some simple steps, we can adapt our behavior and coexist with the wildlife here in beautiful Farmington, Connecticut. So there are four other towns in Hartford County that have an ordinance already and a couple in Litchfield County. The animal control officers there are happy with these ordinances and feel they're working. So, and they've not had to issue citations or many at all. So the goal of the wildlife feeding ordinance is to, it's intended to assist our residents so that we can coexist with wildlife safely and peacefully. The initial report, if I get one, a complaint about a bear, it's an opportunity for me to educate. Depending on the situation, we talk it through, come up with a plan. It's only then if there's continued reports that enforcement action would be taken. And the summary of our bear feeding ordinance would be to prohibit the intentional feeding of wildlife. It would prohibit having bird seed from April 1st through November 30th unless it's a source recognized as not being desirable by bears, and also the improper storage of food and refuge. So the violation would be in the amount of $100 for the first offense, and then if the violation continues after that, each day could be an additional violation. I think that's all.
Okay. Any questions? We will open up to public questions and comments on this topic only. Anyone in the room? Seeing none, anyone online?
Seeing no hands.
Okay. Any questions for comments from the council?
I'll just say thank you very much for your time and putting it all together, Brenda and Chief. Appreciate you guys coming out and doing all this.
I do have one question. I get the pools and the food, but hammocks is actually a draw to the bears.
Well, it's all, when I asked what the other category was, it was children's toys assortment of, you know, belongings that are damaged.
I was just thinking a Yogi Bear. Sorry. Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. This item will be voted on under item N1 later in the evening's meeting. Moving on to item E, new items. I believe we have none. Now we got item F, public comment. This is for any topic you would like to discuss, name, address, and please try and keep your comments brief and respectful of other people's times. Seeing no one in the room? Is there anyone online? Devin?
Seeing no hands.
No hands going up. Okay. Very good. We'll go to item G, reading the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the October 12, 2020, 2021 regular town council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item H, reading of communications and written appeals. Kat, anything?
Nope. There were none that were received.
Okay, none received. We will now go to item I, report of committee's land acquisition committee.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Green Efforts Committee.
No report. The next meeting will be next Tuesday, November 16.
And they are looking for members.
Yes, always.
Farmington High School Building Committee.
Yes. We met on Wednesday, November 3, and there was just a general, I'll report in on the updates we received from our professional partners. Our owner's representative indicated they're continuing their level of engagement with the state of Connecticut on schematic design of the building and onsite tours. And there was a comment made, and I'm sure most people are aware of Costas's departure, and it's our belief that that will have no impact on the project as it proceeds forward and with state reimbursement. The architects reported in, they're working with the design teams at Farmington High School and working groups and school departments reviewing the ed specs. Other areas being discussed are gender spaces, security issues, onsite traffic control, and circulation. They're meeting with TPC regarding the application for building height variance. The construction manager reported in ONG that they are completing their cost estimate pre-construction reconciliation processes, and they're looking sort of at next summer for this coming summer, I guess, for site work and traffic flow development ideas. On the communications front, they're continuing with website changes and updates with regard to critical information as we proceed in the next phase of the project, and they're drafting content for the first post-referendum newsletter, which is scheduled for a pre-Thanksgiving release. And the committee also approved some RFQs for commissioning services and engineering firms to address HVAC issues at the building. Our next meeting will be December 1st.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Racial Equality Task Force.
We're just starting to get everything flowing again. We got some subcommittee meetings coming up, but our next meeting is 11/29/21.
All right. Thank you. Next one is the American Rescue Plan Act ad hoc committee. We just had that prior to this meeting. We will also alert the public when we have the next meeting. Basically, we discussed timeframes on money available and when it would be coming in. We've got three roughly, 3.75 million right now. We're expecting another 3.75 next June. We're waiting also on clarifications for the federal government on some of the possible uses. Amongst them, their main uses broadband waste treatment, potable water, things like that. But there's also a lot, wait, excuse me, revenue loss component that's just been explained, which means if your town lost revenues during that timeframe during COVID, you can use that money to make up for the lost revenue. So that's a whole different piece that we'll be working through. And we discussed a few various potentials, mostly in generalities right now. Hopefully by the next meeting or two, we'll have a good hold on where we might be wanting to spend that money. Okay. That being said, we will move on to the chair report. Okay, a few items. I asked Representative Mr. D'Amico about the Main Street sidewalks. I'd love to get that clarified and let the public understand exactly what the situation was there and why those sidewalks are hopefully going to be starting next summer. Another issue that recently came up, the Parsons Corner. We just had the deed wording that the state requested. We've replied to that. That should be a good sign. That should be able to come in within the next couple of weeks. Although, in light of comments that were brought out during the election, it seems there may be some public support for going back to the concept of developing that project. I was told by my opponent that there is a widespread community support for developing the Parsons Corner. I'm kind of surprised at that because we asked at many meetings and we didn't hear of that, but I think we're gonna have to take a step back and look into that so we're not accused of not doing everything possible to look into all the options. So I would request any of the public out there who has a strong feeling on this, one way or the other, please contact Town Hall and let us know. Just as far as that project and the development of it, if you recall, for anyone who's been watching our meetings and paying attention, we actually put it out to bid, and we had zero responses. No one was interested in developing that property at the time. That being said, going with a modified open space seemed like the logical conclusion, but we'll revisit that, and unfortunately, that will slow down this whole process a bit. Also, it was brought up, there was some question as to the 700,000 that the previous capital placed into the capital budget for potential purchase of that land. For those of you who have not been following our budget proceedings, we did that in the previous council, and just last year, we took 675,000 of that money, moved it back into the general funds, which was then reallocated into the fund balance. So 675,000 of the 700 has gone right back to where it started. The 75,000, which is still in the capital budget, is there pending any potential expenses for this land. So we will decide if there is a need for that. If the next council decides to take that out of the capital budget, we may do that, but it is available. As far as the original $2 million price that the state was offering this at, that was double what the state paid for. So that was never a deal. That particular price was double what our appraised value was, so there's not any likelihood we would have ever paid 2 million for the property. And again, there was no interest whatsoever in it. When we negotiate, I negotiated the $1,000 for open space, we put a clause in there that said we could revisit at any point in time if the town felt this property would be valued to develop. And if it is, we can purchase that at whatever is deemed the market value at that point in time. You know, right now, I'd just like to say, as I'm sure many people are, I'm very happy that the election season is over. I'm hopeful that we can put the personal tax aside so we can get back to the business of governing the town, something we have done for generations without the personal tax. The last time I saw that behavior was by a gentleman named John Landry. Haven't seen anything as bad since. The recount we just had, a number of sat through this room for 12 hours yesterday going through a recount. There were four different offices that had to be recounted. When it was completed, the numbers that came through were all within a couple of votes of what the machines printed out. So I'd just like to say to the public at large and all the candidates as well, we should be very comfortable with the system we have. It worked incredibly well. All the results were just as they should have been from the machine printouts and the absentee votes. So I'd like to thank the team, not only that was here for 12 hours yesterday doing all that counting, but all of the poll workers throughout the election season. And I'll throw this out there because one of them said it yesterday. Anyone who was here watching yesterday, you're more than welcome to volunteer next year to show up at the polls and help out. We are always looking for poll workers, so please put your hand up when it's time to do that. And I would also, not just to this body, to all the bodies, all the newly elected, I would like to congratulate you and welcome you to the bodies that you will be joining. That being said, I close the chair's report. We now move on to number two, Board of Education.
Thank you, CJ. Before I report on the Board of Ed, I'd just like to add just acknowledgement that just recently came out. And for the first time, U.S. News &amp; World Report posted its rankings for the top elementary and middle schools in each state. And West District School was number 10 on their report as one of the best elementary schools in the state, so I'd like to acknowledge Caroline Fink and the entire West District community for their success in that regard. The Board of Ed met on October 18. And just go through some of the highlights. There was acknowledgement of the FHS Ad-Hoc Committee and their accomplishments with regard to the mascot. The Farmington Public Schools Foundation and Tony Shockley presented a check in the amount of $11,031 for the 2021-2022 teacher grants. There was a quite robust public comment section of the meeting, which went on for quite some time. Two issues in particular that were brought to the board's attention were issues arising with the GSA at Irving Robbins School and the request for recognition of DiWali as a holiday, school holiday. Then, you know, as I probably say in the past, you know, it'd be, it would be good if people, if you really want to go into deep dive into the Board of Ed meetings, you should maybe watch it because there's a lot of data and detail provided, and the last meeting was one of them with regard to class size reports, enrollment reports, and certain testing. But just with regard to enrollment, some of the highlights were the total enrollment for the schools as of October 1 was 4,038 students. The difference from year to year over October 1, 2020 to October 1, 2021 is 44 additional students. The difference between '21 and '22 projections versus actual enrollments is 50 additional students. And East Farms remains above capacity due to enrollment projections in the coming years. There's significant detail there. The board is continuing and the administration is continuing to look at long-range enrollment projections with elementary school capacities and enrollments, also considering special education needs and general student needs with regard to the schools and enrollments and how they align to the district's priorities. The board and administration continue to implement the K-3 facility review recommendations, including both short and long-term capital budget requests, and continue to monitor residential developments and housing trends. There was a brief update on the Racial Equality Task Force and the board's, making sure the board's actions are aligned with the recommendations from the town. As I said, the S- As I said, the S-BAC results, this Smarter Balance Assessments Consortium results and results and outcomes reports were presented. I won't go into great detail on those, you can pull up the meeting and see. But as usual, this year, they're a little bit skewed, maybe not as truly represented because of the impact of COVID and, but still, the district is doing fantastic on its standardized testing. And they're working really on three budget seasons right now. The auditors are in the office for the 2021 budget, they're currently managing the 21-22 and launching the 22-23 budget process. Various policy updates and that's about it.
Great, thank you, Chris. Economic Development.
The October Economic Development Commission meeting was canceled and our next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, November 10th at 5:30 PM.
Great, thanks, Ed. Farmington Historic District Commission.
Thank you, just a couple of items. At 17 Tungus Street, there was an application for temporary certificate of appropriateness to install a roof-mounted solar array, and it was voted to approve the solar array. Also, at 40 Colton Street, there was an application to replace steps, replace a walkway, replace a front door and side lights, install a porch light, install some light posts on a stone wall at overhang on a garage. There was a discussion about some work had been done without an application to the Historic District, and there was some discussion about it's better if you, and I just want to point out that you should be going to the Historic Commission to do work, before you do work in the Historic District. The, there was a motion made and it did not pass and there was, they felt that some installed lamps with light fixtures on the stone wall, the application was denied. Commissioners were not in favor of the light posted, the light posts, and suggested the applicant submit a new application with a different style of light fixture with downcast lighting. In other business, it was discussed and finally approved that meetings will start at 5:00 PM rather than 4:00 PM, formally starting on November 16th at our next meeting. And that's it, so thank you very much.
Brian, it sounds like it was a very busy year in the Historic District Commission.
Yes, it was. It always is.
It always is. Everything seemed to run pretty smoothly throughout the year.
And now it's history.
There you go, that's good to hear. Particularly in light of how we started the year with the Historic District, when the previous Chair was voted out and he asked for a legal opinion, disregarded it, held an illegal election to get us to the current Chair. But I thank you for your help. Moving on to the Housing Authority.
Nothing to report on, thank you.
Excuse me?
Okay. Human Relations Commission.
Yes, HRC. We met November 1st. Shannon Rutherford presented to the HRC and the Housing Authority about the Affordable Housing Plan. They approved the HRC's four goals based on community needs assessment conducted earlier in 2021. Nancy Parent proposed a rating scale that the HRC utilized in order to vet events, activities, acknowledgements, as recommended by the town manager. The next meeting will be the 22nd and they are planning a Human Rights Day on December 10th.
Great, thank you, Joe. Library Board.
Nothing to report on?
Town Planning and Zoning.
No news?
Unionville Historic.
The Unionville Historic District Commission met on November 4th. The Commission approved a modification to their 2019 Certificate of Appropriateness for the Unionville Museum. This was for the expansion on the rear part of the museum with the bathroom and all of that. And the modifications were to allow for a shallower roof, slope of the roof on the rear expansion, using an EPDM as the roofing membrane along with a water ice shield. And there'll also be an additional certificate, presentation for another Certificate of Appropriateness to look at a concrete sidewalk, which will be brought up at our next meeting, which is on December 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Great. Is the museum still in the middle of their fundraising, do you know?
I think they, I think they've got the money at this point.
Okay, great, thank you. Histor, Village Improvement Association.
Nothing to report there.
I waited till the mass came on to ask you that, sorry. WPCA.
Tomorrow, the 10th is their next meeting at 7:00 PM.
Great. Any other liaisons to report? Seeing none. Moving on to the report of the Town Manager, Kat.
Just two quick things to report. First is on Veterans Day, which is this Thursday. A short ceremony will be held at the Farmington Town Hall in front of the Veterans Memorial Monument at 11:00 AM on Thursday, November, excuse me, 11th. And then we are having a Town Council reception before our next regular Town Council meeting on December 14th from 6:00 to 7:00, so right before the meeting. This will be to honor the outgoing members of the Farmington Town Council and the Town Clerk, Paula Ray. So to the outgoing members, please invite your families, and again, that is before the meeting at 6:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you, Kat. Moving on to Item L, Appointments.
Let's see, I've got to make a motion.
Oh, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the Town Manager's report.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously, thank you. Now, Item L, Appointment.
Okay. Take two. Agenda Item L5, I make a motion that Gary Gross be appointed to the Housing Authority for the balance of a five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2026. Little few words on Gary. Gary is a resident of New Horizons Village in Unionville. Gary has been involved in many initiatives with this disabled community, including the Citizens Coalition for Equal Access. He is passionate about the community and disability rights, as well as being involved in creating change and equal access for all.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda L6, I make a motion to add Ann Newberry to be appointed to the Housing Authority for a balance of a five-year term, beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2026. A couple of words on Ann Newberry. Ann Newberry has lived in Farmington for over 32 years, since retiring from teaching in 1998. She has been a worker at the, at the elections and became first certified as a moderator in 2009. Her volunteer work in town has included driving people for medical appointments, for services for the elderly, helping with the low-vision group, volunteering at the Farmington Library book sales, and most recently, serving on the Human Relations Commission. Ann is also on the Board of the Farmington Historical Society, serving as Secretary since 2008.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Moving on to all business, seeing none. New business N.
Agenda Item N1, I make a motion to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 78, Animals, to add Article 2 Wildlife Feeding as attached.
Second.
Motion to second, Kat.
This is the motion to amend Chapter 78 of the Town Code to add the wildlife feeding. This was reviewed at tonight's public hearing.
Questions, comments? I will just make one comment. As was mentioned during the presentation, there are a number of other towns who have already made some type of ordinance, and most of the towns in the Farmington Valley have been discussing doing this. It is creating another tool for the police to use, so if someone is feeding bears, there is actually, you don't just have to say, please don't do that, you can say, it's, it's the law, it's part of our ordinance, you must stop. That being said, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Peter.
Agenda Item N2, we're going to move forward with this, CJ?
Yes, we'll go through, make the motion and then we'll go through the history.
Agenda Item N2, I make a motion to refer the transfer of 2,216 square foot piece of town open space property to Wilson Development in exchange for 5,252 square foot piece of property to be made permitted open space to the Town Planning, Town Planning and Zoning Commission for a report under Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second.
Motion to second, Kat.
In 2016, the developer of Bridge Hampton, Wilson Development, approached the town regarding this land swap. On March 8th, 2016, the Town Council referred the property to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for an 8-24 approval. This swap received a positive referral and then it was sent to the Conservation Commission for its approval. On April 20th, 2016, the Conservation Commission unanimously voted to deny the transfer of town open space. Commissioners voting in opposition to the request expressed concern with tree removal, encroachment to the bridge, and pesticides affecting the stream below because the cold water stream outlets into the Unionville Brook, which is one of the last trout brooks in the state. For that reason, the Town Council did not take any further action on the swap, and based on that information that I have received, it is likely that the Conservation Commission would conclude that the environmental issues identified in 2016 are still applicable and the outcome would be the same. I do have our Town Planner, Shannon Rutherford, on the Zoom call to provide some more history around this and some more information about the Conservation Commission's decision. So Shannon, are you, are you on?
Yes, I am, Kat, yes. So just to provide just a bit more information, in 2016, the Conservation Commission did do a site walk at this location and observed the request in the field in person and was deliberated over two meetings before arriving at their decision. And we have done further research in our office. Bruce Seer actually has helped me go through the historic plans and the meeting minutes from 2005 and 2006, when this development was originally approved. And what we have found is the Conservation Commission at that point had issued a report to Town Planning and Zoning Commission indicating that all property lots should be no closer than 100 feet to any of the wetland boundaries. So this particular property line, as it sits today, is exactly 100 feet to the wetland delineation. So if an expansion, if the land swap was granted, then it would be notably less than that 100 feet that had been decided upon back on, in 2005 and 2006. And that's all I have for additional information, and I'm happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Thank you, Shannon. Any additional questions?
Good, CJ. Chris? Yeah, no, in just reading, you know, the agenda, it says, based on the information received, likely Conservation Commission will conclude they're still applicable. Is there another meeting? Is the Conservation Committee going to meet again, or are we going to get further input from them, or?
No, this was, was requested to be brought to the Town Council from the developer in response to that decision that was made in 2016. So it's a Town Council prerogative if they wanted to send it back or if they wanted to take any other action on this particular item.
Okay. And then Planning and Zoning approved it, though?
At the 8-24, it was approved by Planning and Zoning, but when it was referred to the Conservation Commission, they denied it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
So I, oh, go ahead, Peter, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Brian.
Oh, so there are still concerns with the property and what would the impact be with the land swap?
Shannon, would you be able to answer that one?
Certainly, so nothing has changed. So if the land swap were to take place, then this property line and the residential use of the property would be closer to the wetland than what ideally would be normally permitted, or for this development would be permitted. So they had requested that all property lines be at least 100 feet from the wetland. If this land swap is granted, then this property line would be somewhere between 70 to 80 feet. And there's risk of encroachment and there's risk of pesticides and other erosion in general that would impact the wetland and the water course that is below, there's a significant grade differential. So the concerns, I believe the concerns of the Conservation Commission would remain the same. The request is the same and the concerns remain the same.
Any other questions, Peter, Joe?
Trying to get through all this, it sounds like it's not a good situation to do this swap with that. I'm just boiling it down for the town. Yes, no?
Is that to Shannon?
Yes.
In, in my opinion, as having been liaison to inland wetlands for the last six years, yes, I would agree. It would be counter to what the direction and the work the Conservation Commission did back in 2005 and 2006, yes.
Thank you.
CJ, but this is still a developable lot. I mean, it's just, we're just increasing a request for the backyard, that's all it is, yeah, okay.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so we have, do we have a motion out there?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to second. We can vote on this motion or we can just table this motion at this point in time. There is a new council coming in and we could leave it to them to have these discussions or we can get further information going forward. Thoughts?
Table it.
Yeah, I would table it. I mean, I know, Shannon, you say that it would be the same, but I almost would like, it's been a five-year period of time, I would just like to have the Conservation, my suggestion would be have the Conservation Commission weigh in again. I mean, it's a passage of five years. It may be the same result, nothing's changed, but just have them look at it one more time.
Yeah, I'm in favor of tabling it as well, if that makes sense.
Okay, can we move to table?
Do we need a motion on it?
Yes. You need a motion and you need to table it to a definite time or an indefinite time?
An indefinite time right now, I think.
Okay.
Ideally, it would be January when the new council is here, but it depends how quickly the new council gets in speed, so I don't want to set a date on that just yet. We're going to have three new members that we have to get up to speed before we deal with this.
I am, my question is, if we do table this, can we also make the request that this go back to inland wetlands for?
No, actually, if we pass the 824, that's what it does. It will go to TP and Z and then inland wetlands. So by tabling it, we don't make that decision. We'd have to vote on it tonight, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're moving to table this?
Yeah.
Tabling the issue. Moving on to N3.
Agenda Item N3, to approve the attached fire station comprehensive building project statement of needs and to appoint a fire station building committee with the following building members.
Second.
We have a motion to second, Kat.
This is the fire station building project. It's my understanding that there are no people ready to be named, so I would suggest having the council table this for the December meeting so that names could be brought forward.
Okay, excellent. Any questions, concerns? We do not have the names for the members of this committee, so we're going to table it and we're hoping to take care of this all at the December meeting.
We need a motion to table and then vote on it.
Okay.
I make a motion to agenda, to table Agenda Item N3.
Until the December.
Until the December meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, we're tabling, December will be the day we discuss this. Item four.
Agenda Item N4, I make a motion to award a contract in the amount of $74,985.96 to JNS Radio Sales, Inc. for communications upgrade Phase 2 under the Connecticut State Contract 19PSX0088.
Second.
We have a motion to second, Kat.
Town of Farmington Fire Department has incorporated a phase plan over four years for communication upgrades. This is in the town's capital improvement plan. Phase 2 will replace the majority of portable and mobile communications equipment on the fire apparatus located at Farmington Fire Station. This upgrade will replace radios that have been in service for 15 to 20 years, as well as add portables on the apparatus.
Okay, any questions? We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Item five.
Agenda Item N5, I make a motion that Section 55-1 of the Town Code of Ordinances be waived and that SWAB Wagon Company Incorporated of Elizabethville, Pennsylvania be awarded a contract to refurbish Medic 16's advanced life support fiberglass body unit and remount it on a new cabin chassis at a total cost of $55,000.
Second.
Motion to second, Kat.
The fiscal year 2021-2022 capital improvement budget contains funds to purchase a new vehicle to replace Medic 16, which is located at Tungus's Hose. The town has purchased a new cabin chassis for this purpose, and these are on order and expected to be delivered in March of 2022. The next step in the process is to contract with the vendor to remove the advanced life support body on the current Medic 16, refurbish it, and mount it on the new chassis when it is delivered. Because the existing body is a SWAB product and because SWAB Because the existing body is a SWAB product and because SWAB built the existing Medic 16, the fire staff have recommended that SWAB be used to perform the work to create the new Medic 16. Based on their recommendation, this request is for the town council to waive the bidding requirements and award a contract to SWAB in the amount of $55,000 to perform the work.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Concerns? Hearing none. We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item N6, I make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below.
Second?
We have a motion to second. You're seeing your list of property tax refunds. Anything to add, Kat?
Nope. Just the list is right in front of you on the agenda.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Executive session, I believe we have none.
Nope.
So before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I will leave you with this from Robert Louis Stevenson. Sooner or later, everyone sits down to the banquet of consequences with that.
I make a motion to adjourn the November 9, 2021 Farmington Town Council meeting.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:51. Thank you, everyone.